All right, seeing that is six thirty, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Plainville Select Board. Uh, be Monday, August twelfth. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask you to please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of fallen members of our military and first responder communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We'll start with a quick review of the agenda. We've got the consent agenda. We'll have public comment throughout the meeting. Uh, we have got announcements today. We've got a report on the spirit of Plainville. We've got a board of health vacancy. Uh, we are going to be opening the warrant for a special town meeting. We've got some proposed articles for our special town meeting through review. With the Comcast proposed, uh, Comcast proposed contract to go over, um, ARPA has-
Speak up, please.
Yes, Mr. Shepherdson. Happy to. Uh, ARPA has declined to fund our library HVAC replacement, uh, so we'll be discussing that. We've got the introduction of our new DPW, uh, director. We've got, uh, lead service line inventory planning grant to discuss. We'll be approving, uh, application for change of manager for Cumberland Farms. Be approving a Hawker peddler license. We've got an amendment to the FY twenty-four budget, an appointment of Alfred Morell as special police officer. Be, uh, signing a state primary warrant, got an overview of the upcoming election by, um, let's see here. We've also got, uh, appointment of election officials and appointment of a tree warden. We're going to take some things, uh, out of order. We're going to start, um, uh, with the last item first, six dot ten, appointment of tree warden, Mr. Noble.
So I'd like, uh, to ask the-
Could we approve the agenda and the-
Picky, picky, picky.
Before we get into our actions.
I move that the select board vote to accept the consent agenda as presented and approve the minutes of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting as presented.
Seconded.
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
With that, Mr. Noble.
I would like to introduce you again to, uh, Kevin Baldwin, who currently serves the town as our conservation agent and who's been acting as the tree warden since the departure of our previous tree warden. And before you tonight is my request to appoint him as our, uh, full tree warden. Um, he's actually been extraordinarily valuable, uh, to me, other than when I go out and look at a tree and it's a tree. Uh, he actually knows what kind of tree it is and, and has been very helpful to our residents and, uh, giving them sage advice and wisdom. So I asked the board, uh, to, uh, appoint him permanently the tree warden.
I would echo, uh, Mr. Noble's comments, uh, in that I've had a couple of questions from residents as well that I've been able to direct him. It's very nice to have somebody so knowledgeable in that role. And with that said, I would move the select board vote to appoint Kevin Baldwin as tree warden effective August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Congratulations. Um, let's see. He wants you to move something else around there.
Do you have announcements?
Yes, this is-
Number two-
Seven, eight, nine.
Late to, uh, election.
Our announcements.
You can go to announcement or elections, whichever you prefer. Okay.
She wants you to do announcements.
Okay, very good. Uh, one second. My computer cooperates if I can. This afternoon, I was informed by the town of North Attleboro that they had, um, a, uh, positive, uh, test result come from five of their drinking water supplies wells, um, of a contaminant. Uh, pre-fecal matter is the direct answer. Uh, this was discovered in the raw input into their treatment plant, not in the finished product that comes out of the treatment plant, which means, of course, the treatment plant is doing its, uh, its job properly. At this particular time in the season, we don't need to be drawing water from North Attleboro. Once informed, we shut off the interconnections, the municipal connections between Plainville and North Attleboro. We're fine. Except that the Department of Environmental Protection has, uh, asked us to issue a boil water advisory, uh, for those sensitive, uh, to the possibility. We have done, uh, tests today that will have results from tomorrow to make sure that we're, we're fine. I do believe we are fine no matter what. Uh, even North Attleboro only had to issue the advisory and not the mandatory, uh, boil water. So, uh, this announcement has gone out on Facebook, on the website, um, in the emails for those who have subscription to the town's email system. So consequently, that's what the story is about the, the boil water advisory.
Got a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to confirm a couple of points there. This was for five different wells in different locations in the town that all came in, in one test batch or one batch of tests, excuse me. Um, and I understand North Attleboro is also retesting all five, uh, to validate that.
That's correct. Um, since all five wells, it's really unlikely that five wells in different areas would be affected. Uh, even the DEP is suspicious and ordered the samples that they did take to be retested and to draw additional samples for further testing. I, I, I do believe this is, uh, a false positive, but, uh, DEP moves on the, um, overcautious side, uh, which I think is only correct when you're dealing with people's drinking water. Um, but I think we took enough proactive that we're fine. And, um, I, I do believe that issuing the advisory is, is probably more than you need to worry about.
And just to reiterate two other points, these were raw samples. Treated water was all fine.
Correct.
Our water, as far as we know, has been fine and we're retesting it. And we disconnected as soon as we heard about the result issue. So we're not getting any of that water anyway.
That is correct.
Okay.
And we'll post the results of tomorrow's test online?
We will. Yes, we will.
So just to clarify, that test that's getting, getting posted tomorrow, that's the Plainville test?
We'll post both.
And North Attleboro will have their results?
They'll have their, their retest and their new test. We'll have our new test. So, um, so I think that the most important thing for people to know is that this was discovered raw treatment, meaning pre the, the treatment plant, which the treatment plant's supposed to do this. So on the other side, on the finished product, we were fine. Both us and, 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 uh, North Attleboro, we will be fine. Um, but the DEP does require the boil water advisory, so.
Thank you.
What about the lakes too? There's been an issue from, uh, up in Boston about all the lakes in Massachusetts, about the hot chemicals that are in there.
I'd have to refer you to the board of health. I have no, no, I have no information. She's not-
Keep going on, uh, announcements.
Okay, so, uh, last week, we issued the notice to proceed on the South Street I and I project. Um, we issued that on the seventh. They actually started this morning. Um, and there is a note on the website, uh, that tells which streets we're doing first. Um, this is, um, um, it's a great project that should really save us some additional money on treating basically rainwater in the sewer plant. So we're really looking forward. We have meter readings before lining. We'll have meter readings after lining. Um, they'll move very quickly, uh, through the process because that's, all this company does is sewer lining. Uh, and they'll be in and out very quickly. They're moving very quickly now. Um, it's an interesting, if you want to stand and look down a manhole, it's pretty interesting for five minutes. Um, and then, uh, so I'm really sort of excited about this. This is a seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollar contract for the town to do this. And it should well into the future pay us dividends and save us more than the seven hundred and fifty, forty-one thousand. So really excited about finally getting this, you know, going. Um, we have a resignation from the board of health. Um, Richard Aitchin, who served the town for many years on the board of health, has resigned. Um, his, um, resignation letter was filed properly with the board of health, excuse me, with the town clerk's office. And, uh, we recognize the demands on his personal time and, uh, we are concerned for his and his wife's health as they, uh, have some struggles. So we, uh, our, our thoughts and prayers are with him. Uh, this does create unfortunately an opening on a three-member board of health. So the, um, under the, uh, bylaws, we will convene a joint meeting between the board of health and the select board. And they will, uh, pick a new member who will serve until April of the town election and then run for the rest of the unexpired term, which would be two years. So at the next town election, there would be a two-year seat and a three-year seat, uh, up for election. Um, this would be a joint meeting between the board and, uh, the two boards, rather. Uh, we will post on the website the vacancy so we can get some people who might be interested in serving on the board of health to submit an availability record. We'll have that posted tomorrow as long as the board concurs, and then we'll go for a joint meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Would we need to do something prior to our next meeting or in our next scheduled meeting, should we just have a joint meeting there?
We just do a joint meeting and generally speaking, we take the applicants that we have and interview them and then the boards can vote.
Okay.
Uh, lastly, um, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, uh, Mr. Wydeck would like to speak on the spirit of Plainville.
Absolutely. Mr. Wydeck, would you like to come on up?
Oh, very good, Mr. Noble. Thank you.
No, thank, uh, Maggie. She did the work.
I'm here to let this spirit of Plainville be known throughout the town. Uh, we are having the first annual gala and it's going to be on September seventh, and the tickets are still available. And it's going to be in the Plainville venue, which is Heather Hill over on Bacon Street. And we would like to see any of the Plainville residents come out and, uh, have a good time. It's more to raise money for future things for Spirit of Plainville. As everybody knows, we've already had five concerts at the Telford Park. And last week's concert was fairly successful, I thought, because we had an amount of about a hundred and fifty people. So we're looking forward to having this gala to raise a little money so we could possibly have a parade in the year two thousand twenty-five, which will make Plainville a hundred and twenty years old. We're also looking forward to maybe having some fireworks and a few other things like that. So this gala should be a good time and, uh, we're hoping that the Plainville people will come out and join us. And I talked to Mr. Kelly and he's already got, I think, six people bringing it on his table. Uh, Mr. Noble said he was going to buy some tickets, not to put him on the spot, but the idea is-
Well, you're going to be a platinum sponsor.
So, so the idea is now, this is more of a, uh, a fun time to try to get some of the people together in, uh, in the town of Plainville. And, and the reason I came before you guys today is to have this shown on TV and that way everybody in the town knows about it. And the, um, we have two other people that are very crucial in this and our main driving force is, uh, Mrs. Clark. And she's the president of the Spirit of Plainville. And if Mrs., if I miss anything, Mrs. Clark, join in and tell the people the good time they can have.
May I?
Please do.
So, yeah, I think it's going to be a lot of fun. I think the whole point of this organization is about doing things that are fun. So as much as this is a fundraiser, it's also going to be a fun night, hopefully. Um, and if you're interested in coming, seventy-five dollars a ticket. We take cash, check, Venmo, PayPal. We'll, we'll get you your tickets one way or another. Um, but we're also looking for sponsorships. We're looking for donations to create some raffle baskets and things like that where we're looking for anything small, little things. If you want to give us a hundred and fifty pens or something, we're looking to make some little goodie bags for everyone to take home. So there's so many ways you could help us with this gala. If you're interested at all, please reach out to myself or Stanley or you can find our, our Facebook page and, and get some information there. But the, you know, we really, we're really trying to get this off the ground and bring some fun things to Plainville. Like Stan said, you know, maybe a parade, maybe Fourth of July fireworks, you know, uh, you continue the concert series. Maybe some holiday events, it's, uh, an arts and crafts festival. There's a lot of ideas, but everything, of course, costs money. So, um, whatever you can do to help out, we appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Stan.
Thank you. Um, all right, I think there were two more items we wanted to take out of order. Um, the next was an overview of our upcoming election. Um, Cindy Bush, did I see you come in the room? There you are. Can you come up?
Hello?
How are you?
Good. Thank you for letting me provide a brief update.
Absolutely.
The state primary election will be Tuesday, September third, and voting in person will be at the Public Safety Building in the back in the fire base as always from seven AM to eight PM. Uh, we also have early vote by mail that's happening right now. The last day to submit an application, if you would like to vote by mail, is August twenty-sixth by five PM. However, I would recommend you do so much sooner because we have to mail that ballot to you via the local post office and goes to Providence and then back to Plainville. Um, so you want to get your application in quickly so we can get your ballot back. All ballots need to be received back by September third at the close of polls, eight PM. In addition to early vote by mail and voting in person, um, on Election Day, we're also offering early voting in person here in this room at the town hall. There's a little bit of a sign over there which is going to be hung up. Um, but there are five days that that will be offered. One is a Saturday. The first day is August twenty-fourth. And then it will be normal business hours, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, the twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth. So many opportunities to get your vote in. And if anybody has any questions, as always, please contact my office. We'd be happy to help you.
Good. Thank you.
No, thank, thank you, Cindy, and thank you to everyone in your office. I know this is a super busy time of year and will be for the rest of the year, I guess.
Busy fall. It's good. Thank you. Um, I also have a warrant for you to sign. I think you have that too for this election.
Ryan Fuller.
Do you want this motion?
Yes. Six, nine.
Six, seven.
And appointing the election officials. Do you want to do that all now?
Oh, I don't, oh, I don't know. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump the topic.
Yeah, we can go to six, nine, right?
Yep. Or six, seven.
Let me do six, one, six, seven.
Six, seven.
Oh, six, seven, rather.
And six, nine.
Okay.
And both.
All right. I move that the select board vote to sign the state primary warrant as presented.
Seconded.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you, did you have any, did you want to say anything about the election workers or are we good to go?
Um, no, I just need you to appoint the election officials for the following event.
Okay. I move that the select board vote to appoint election officials for the following event, appoint election officials for the following event. State primary, September third, twenty twenty-four. Wardens, Danielle Hoyt, Judy Pike, Brenda Watkinson. Clerks, Maureen Garen, Claire Stafford, Patricia Stewart. Inspectors, Patricia Stein, Doris Madden, Jack Frassa, Carol Lurch, Fran Wittenberger, Susan Hart, Hart Shorn, Christine Moore, Jean McDonald, Bob Grisato, Patricia Lebec, Lynn Bernier.
Seconded.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you to all those volunteers as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
This is fun.
All right, so then the other thing we want to do is the introduction of DPW.
Correct.
All right. All right. And we have one more item to do out of order while we wrap up these signatures, which is six dot one, which is the introduction of our new DPW Director, William O'Rourke. Would you like to come on up to the front for us?
So I'd like to introduce to the board, uh, William Bill O'Rourke, who we recruited from the town of Sudbury to come join us here in Plainville. He is also a professional engineer, uh, with years of experience both in engineering and in, uh, Department of Public Works in other towns, including most recently Sudbury. Um, we, uh, we really grilled him bad dramatically. Uh, we had the two acting interim directors join me and then I, uh, did it. And then, uh, the select board individually met with him. So I'm pleased to present him. I think his personality and his credentials speak well of him, and he will be a good mix to our team here in Plainville.
Very happy to have you.
I'm excited to be here.
Um, I, I think, you know, we, we did have someone in, in the interim come in and I think that there was, found that there was a lot of work to be done.
Absolutely.
I thought, let's see, I think that there was a lot of, uh, uh, organization that's already been put in place. And so hopefully, you know, there's a little bit of a head start for you. Um, but, uh, I don't want to say you've definitely got your, your work cut out for you, but I'm very, I'd say, excited to see, uh, what you can put together. So, uh, best of luck and, uh, definitely be looking forward to seeing, uh, what, what kind of results we can, we can have by the end of the year here.
Absolutely.
No pressure.
No pressure.
The floor to it all.
No pressure, but it's basically what everybody sees. It's the, it's the thing everyone in town sees.
I understand perfectly.
As you, as you well know.
Yep.
But, uh, welcome. We're thrilled to have you.
Happy to be here. Thank you. A pleasure meeting you all. And I look forward to getting to know all of you and the residents as well.
Yeah, I, it, it was pleased to meet you before. Pleased to bring you on tonight. I echo the chairman's con- comments as well as, uh, my personal, uh, joy that you're, you're coming in with, as a PE. I think that's going to help us a lot with some of the challenges we have. And, um, certainly anything I can do to support your work, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I would just echo that. Welcome. I think you're going to like it here. It's a nice little town and, um, I think it's a, it's a good place to live for us and work for you. So, welcome.
Thank you. Mrs. Clark?
Thank you. Welcome to the team.
Mr. Kelly? Good.
So I guess we have to wing a motion to appoint and waive the remainder of the right of rescission if we can do that.
Okay. I think that's Jeff's forte. Mr. Johnson, if you would be so kind.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move the select board, uh, uh, waive the fifteen-day right of rescission on the job offer and welcome Mr. O'Rourke as our Director of DPW.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome to Plainville.
His first day is the twenty-sixth, and we are looking forward to it.
Awesome.
I'll let my, my wife know. Perfect.
Thank you. All right, back to the regularly scheduled program. Uh, we're back to number, uh, four dot one, uh, opening the warrant and selecting a closing date for special time meeting to be held on October seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I'd like to ask the board to open the warrant for the special town meeting of October seventh, twenty twenty-four, uh, with the expectation of closing it on the twenty-sixth. The posting date is the twenty-fourth, and then prior to the posting date, we need to actually publish the warrant. And in addition to that, backing up, two of the finance committee needs to vote on these articles or hear these articles and vote on them as well. So we've made my goal to close the warrant on the week of the twenty-sixth, have the finance committee meet on the week of the twenty-sixth or the following week, which would be the Labor Day week, and then go to publication either Labor Day week or the week after so that we can have enough distribution of the warrant, uh, to, to spark an interest in attending. Um, before you, as a sample warrant with, uh, we already have, um, proposed articles, five proposed articles. Um, would you like me to go through them?
Would you please?
Certainly.
Do you want, do you want us to vote to open it first or?
Well, you can do both. Yes, please. Thank you.
We're actually talking about it?
Yep.
Did, so just open it?
Open and close. You want to open it on tonight and close it on the twenty-sixth?
Okay. I move that the select board vote to open the warrant for the special town meeting of October seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Seconded.
And close it on the twenty-sixth.
To, to be closed on the twenty-sixth.
Seconded again.
All those in favor?
My first second. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, so for the October seventh meeting at seven o'clock at the Beatrice Wood Elementary School. First article is the big one. It is the vote to appropriate, uh, twenty-five million dollars to design, construct, and equip the new water treatment plant, uh, facility, including the payments, uh, of costs incidental to the construction of that, uh, plant. And to, uh, and, uh, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow that sum of money under chapter forty-four, section eight, four, um, of the Mass General laws. And also authorizes the board to apply for, uh, ARPA funds through Norfolk County, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Revolving Fund, grants, gifts, donations for the purposes of this vote, uh, also from other federal sources. Uh, we'd like to get an earmark if we could do that. And, um, and it also allows the board then to spend it, um, appropriately for this article. And then hopefully, uh, to reduce the borrowing by, uh, any amount of funds that we receive, uh, in anticipation of construction. Second article is to amend the bylaws of the town, to reconcile the bylaws about town meeting with the town charter. Uh, it would change the bylaw, which is one fifteen dash one, from, uh, assigning the first day, the first Monday in June, uh, to a date selected by the select board, uh, and, uh, at the la- in the last quarter of the fiscal year on both a date and a time that the select board so selects. And the reason for that is the meeting got moved to June, as I understand it, so that they would know how the other two towns had voted on the KP budget. But since that really hasn't been a difficulty in the last few years, uh, we'd like to give the, um, town a little more time to, to, uh, implement the budget as adopted by the town meeting, backing it up a little bit. We pass a budget in, uh, the first week of June and it goes into effect on the first week in July. So, uh, this would back it up, uh, to any date that the board selects in, um, April, May, or June. Um, this would give a little more flexibility, uh, to the board and maybe move it into cooler weather.
We have had, uh, excuse me-
committee to put that forward to town meeting, and hopefully, and that's assuming that all three towns do it. They have to put it forward in same format. So consequently, I'm waiting to hear back from my peers to make sure that they are all going to do the same thing, but this would allow them to put money necessarily previously directed, let's say, to their excess and deficiency account. They would be able to reserve it into capital stabilization. As we know, they have a roof project coming up soon, so they would like to start putting some money aside for that project coming up. So we'll be getting some proper wording, because it has to be consistent with the three towns, so I'm waiting to, to get that information. Possible article number four are two requests to the Community Preservation Committee for funding for design and construction of a water line to the Plainville Athletic League. That's on Everett Skinner Road, for those who don't know. We're not quite sure on the pricing as yet. This would have to go, both articles, both requests would have to go before the Community Preservation Committee for their approval. They would have to pass in order to be enacted or acted on at town meeting. The second request is for new windows and, I think, a door, but not sure, for the James Humphrey House, as a request from the Historic Commission. But again, these would have to be heard by the Community Preservation Committee and also by the Finance Committee before, it would be properly before town meeting. The fifth article is a bit of a disappointment for me. Federal government administers ARPA. They finally grudgingly approved Massachusetts procurement law, which is 30B and Chapter 149, but they've now decided that they don't like the way green communities' articles are procured. So they're saying either I have to go back and procure it under federal law, which is really difficult, or we have to find another source of funding. Now, several other towns are caught in the same conundrum. We're fighting it. It went from a definite no to we're studying it, but I need to have an article in the warrant in case we need to figure out an alternative source of funds. This could come from unspent previous articles, this could come from free cash, this could come from stabilization, should we require the funding to do it. It would then free up $300,000 in ARPA, so we could use it to supplement some other part of the budget, but I'm very concerned that we have this article previously procured, properly procured, I may add, under Massachusetts law, and we've made a commitment to start construction in September. So it's a little disconcerting to me that they're letting me know this now. So we will need to come up with money to get this done, otherwise, we have a serious problem in the library now with the air conditioning, and secondarily the heating. Heating's not as bad, but it will be, and we have a good plan to fix it, but it's 300,000, so. And that is all I have at the moment for articles.
On this, Article 3, this KP capital stabilization account?
Yes.
How is that, how is that going to work? You know, are we going to have to put a certain amount in there each year, or is that, the town could put however, however much they want in there, and that would just, you know, be reduced from whatever?
No. No, the, the idea would be that they, this is a little concerned we have expressed to the administration of KP. It would be theoretically money that would otherwise have been directed to their excess and deficiency, their stabilization account, but would be, it was segregated out to a capital stabilization account, which would reduce the cost of whatever they need to purchase, let's say roofs, and they would take whatever money's in the capital stabilization and use that in addition to maybe bonding, because a roof is very expensive, and I don't know how much money they could put that quickly into capital stabilization. The concern from one of my peers is, we don't want to be assessed for capital stabilization, and so we need some guardrails established and understanding between the towns and the school administration that this is money otherwise that would be put into excess and deficiency.
I got you, I got you. So they'd be putting it in?
Right.
And then this first one, Article 1?
Yes.
You mentioned you'd go out to borrow the 25 million, less any funds that we're able to get through grants, donations, gifts, anything like that?
Correct.
What is the current running tally on what we're anticipating that we're able to get from the state?
Well, right at the, we'll, we'll, I have some information.
From here.
I actually printed it out for presentation tonight. Excuse me? Go ahead, if you have it on the top of your head, I'd be grateful.
So I know we have 1.5 million earmarked currently, that is safe for us from state funds. We are currently anticipating about 2.5 million from our PFAS settlement, based off the first two defendants who have settled, and there are numerous who are still in the process of settling, so 2.5 is our current number for just those first two defendants. And then I believe we have about 1 million, 1.2 million from previous water capital projects where we've borrowed money, and we have left over, between a few of them, 1.2 million that we can reappropriate towards this capital project if it were approved.
Okay, so 5.2 can come off the top, and then we've got, there's, what is it? It's a 0% interest loan?
Yep.
That's available through the state?
We can receive 15 million at 0%, and we get $495,000 of principal forgiveness.
We're hoping to apply for the other portion as well. That's what we've been approved for. To date is the 15 million for the SRF program. Once the loan program runs out, which is right, right after town meeting, that's why we have the timing at that point, but we can apply to see if we can get the other 10-ish million dollars covered under the SRF program as well, so the full amount would be at the 0% interest, with some principal forgiveness, which would be huge for the town, in terms of saving interest money.
And so if we were to go out to bond this, what would the total length of the bond be approximately?
20 years.
The SRF, right?
Yeah, SRF.
No, I thought the SRF was 30 and 20 for the other.
That's right.
So we, we would put our borrowing, if we, if we have borrowing that's not covered under SRF, out to 30 years. If the SRF would allow us to do 30 years, we're going to do 30 years at 0% interest. Right now, we're estimating, I think, 20 years for the 0%, but we'll, we'll see what they come up with when they approve everything.
So, how, how do we not know any of this stuff already?
Until you put your SRF application in?
Yeah.
You don't know. You can't put your SRF application in until you have a, a bond authorization.
But they don't tell you the guidelines upfront in terms of?
They don't tell us the guidelines, and they don't know how much money they have available until the legislature tells them.
That's for the, that's for the extra million.
Correct. For the extra 10 million.
They know they, they already have allocated the money to support the 15 million.
Right, so in, in what we were allocated, the 15 million currently, they're saying it's at two, they do a 0% for the first few years and then 2%, but if your, if your project is related to PFAS, has any PFAS component to it, they're allowing you to have the 0% interest and the principal forgiveness. So that's, that's what they've been telling everybody, and the program kind of keeps changing as other people apply or don't apply for it.
Okay. Thoughts, questions?
On all of it?
On all of it.
Can we talk about Article 2 a little? Because we've never talked about this. Not sure how I feel about this exactly. I, I almost feel like I might be more comfortable if we wanted to change the date, to change it to a date certain, only because I can see some difficulty in having a date that's not set when everybody plans around that date. Do you know what I mean? I don't know, I've got to put a little more thought into this, but I'm, I, because there's no guidelines in here that says?
When you have to set the date by?
The Board of Selectmen will set the date by such and such a date, or, this feels a little nebulous and could lead to some confusion.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I like the, I like the point about getting it done earlier, particularly in years where there's been, you know?
Yeah, I don't see a harm in doing it earlier necessarily, I just, I'm concerned about the, the lack of a specific date.
Maybe we should think about having a date to set the date.
We could change it so you say.
Establish it.
Recommend it, establish a date, but subject to approval and/or change, because then you want to give the board a little flexibility.
There's just a lot that goes into it, not just from the board?
Yes, because we back up everything.
Everything backs up from that, not, you know, in the, the different offices in town and creating the budget and parenting the documents, the materials, there's a, there's a lot that, that goes into being ready for that date, and if that date is not set until, we don't know when?
We could write it in, you have to set it by a certain date.
I think that needs to be early.
Wait, November?
Timed, timed along with the budgetary guidelines that are sent over to the department heads.
Whatever, whatever, you know? I don't know, just a thought, and I feel like I want to think a little more about it, but?
You don't have to, I'm not asking you to approve it.
Yeah, no, just, we haven't got much time to talk about it, because it's tonight, and then we close it at our next meeting, so?
Correct, you've got two weeks.
This is it. I don't feel like I've really fully thought it through.
That's a good point, though. Maybe go back and forth to Brian 101 and talk about how to back into that, that number?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I certainly could see where, when we send budgetary guidance out in December 1st or whatever, when we send it to the department heads, we ought to be able to give them a date at the same time.
Yeah.
So that all the dates that back out from that are there?
Right, because it's everything that the clerk's office does, it's the schools that have to plan accordingly. It's the printer, the town report, there's a lot.
Yeah, I think if we build that into the article.
So you wouldn't want to just pick a date that's earlier and stick with it forever?
I'm okay with that. I just don't want to do it in June anymore. It's too hot and it's too close to the deadline.
I don't know, can we think about it a little? Can we think about it between now and the next meeting? Because I, there's a part of me that almost feels like that would be a lot easier for everybody if we picked a date that's in May and said, that's our date from going forward.
Yeah, I mean, and how do we say, here we say about the 3rd or the first Monday in June, right?
Right, we say the second Monday in June.
Second Monday in May, for sure. That's fine.
Or whatever.
Yeah. I would like to create a little more room between the adoption of a budget and the implementation of the budget.
Yep.
And frankly, once you get into June, people are busy, so?
Yep.
Is there any other article that you?
No, I'm, I, oh, yeah, the other thing is just on Article 3. I'm also concerned with what language they put in there, and I'm sure, I hope, excuse me, I shouldn't say I'm sure, I hope we will see that language by our next meeting, because otherwise it's going to be very hard to support that action. Anyway, that's it for me.
Right now, it's just a space holder, because I know it's coming, but it has to be identical.
One more comment, can I make another comment? Just on Article 4. I think that using CPC funds on the, for the Cal is a, I think it makes a lot of sense, and agree, I think it makes a lot of sense, both of those.
Yeah, I would love to see that happen. When do they, when do they meet? And I thought we did have a quote, I thought we had something already put together.
We, we have a guesstimate.
Okay.
And I'm going to use that guesstimate in the number, but I'm just confirming a few things.
Okay.
We may get some donations, we may get some volunteerism, this would be all good. We did have a, a different desire, a different design than I had originally anticipated.
Okay.
That brought the cost down dramatically, so consequently, I think that this is, this is a really good article, this is a really good thing to do.
Yeah.
So we're going to work real hard to get that forward. I've spoken to the chairman of this, of the Community Preservation Committee, and she will call a meeting as soon as, as, as we have a number. And we could even do that before the warrant closes on the 26th, scheduled meeting anyway. Doesn't have to wait until the warrant closes, if this is an article going forward, and I believe it is.
Yeah.
It would be nice to, to get this ready to go to the Finance Committee by that last week.
All right, so we have the five articles, we have our warrant.
Wait a moment.
Is there anything else we anticipate?
Warrant starter.
Sorry?
There's nothing else?
No, not at this moment.
Okay.
But once, once you open a warrant, we, it'll, it'll attract attention.
Would you like the motion to approve the proposed article?
You have a question? Go for it.
Yes.
Yep, feel free.
So how was the proposal, there's been a lot of talk about revenue, debt sharing between the town and a debt exclusion and the, and the bonds, how do you plan on paying for that bond?
So I don't know about the debt exclusion, but we've had a lot of talk about a bond, bonding it, so Mr. Noble was just chatting about a 20-year bond for SRF funding, which would be the 0% state program to pay for that. Anything that was not covered, we'd have to go out and bond ourselves, which, as Julie mentioned, we'd go out as absolutely far as possible to have the lowest possible monthly payment.
Reed, what's your thought, Lovey Street, by the way, I apologize?
Absolutely. Typically, a program like that would go to the ratepayers, although we've had multiple conversations to this point as a board about splitting that up, and I think at the, at our last meeting, we were talking about it being a one-third, two-thirds, or possibly a 50-50 split, and if memory serves, I think we were leaning towards maybe a 50-50 split at the last, no?
I think we wanted to see both alternatives.
Okay.
I think there was a real clear consensus.
So we're still on the fence, yeah.
I think you said at least one-third.
At least one-third.
At least one-third.
Wanted to see both.
Wanted to see both.
Okay, that, that, that rings true. So, so that's where we're at right now, is that we're, we'd be bonding it, we'd be getting, looks like we've got 5 million, 5.2 million earmarked with a couple of more settlements waiting to settle, so we have more money possibly coming. And then we've got the 0% SRF, 15 million, if this, if it passes at this meeting, would be guaranteed, with the possibility of the rest of it getting eligible at 0% as well, following the meeting. So, and then again, the 20, 20-year, are we sure that 20 years the max for the SRF?
I'm not sure, no. I, that's what the minimum, I think, would be.
So how was the proposal, there's been a lot of talk about revenue, debt sharing between the town and a debt exclusion and the, and the bonds bond, how do you plan on paying for that bond?
So, I don't know about the debt exclusion, but we've had a lot of talk about a bond, bonding it, so Mr. Noble is just chatting about a 20-year bond for SRF funding, which would be the 0% state program to pay for that. Anything that was not covered, we'd have to go out and bond ourselves, which as Julie mentioned, we'd go out as absolutely far as possible to have the lowest possible monthly payment.
Reed Webster on Ludley Street, by the way, I apologize.
Absolutely. Typically, a program like that would go to the ratepayers, although we've had multiple conversations to this point as a board about splitting that up, and I think at the, at our last meeting, we were talking about it being a one-third, two-thirds, or possibly a 50-50 split, and if memory serves, I think we were leaning towards maybe a 50-50 split at the last, no?
Oh, I think we wanted to see both alternatives.
Okay.
I think there was a real clear consensus.
I think you said at least one-third.
At least one-third.
At least one-third.
Wanted to see both.
Wanted to see both.
Yep, okay, that, that, that rings true. So, so that's where we're at right now, is that we're, we'd be bonding it, we'd be getting, looks like we've got 5 million, 5.2 million earmarked with a couple of more settlements waiting to settle, so we have more money possibly coming. And then we've got the 0% SRF, 15 million, if this, if it passes at this meeting, would be guaranteed, with the possibility of the rest of it getting eligible at 0% as well, following the meeting. So, and then again, the 20, 20-year, are we sure that 20 years is the max for the SRF?
I'm not sure, no. I, that's what the minimum, I think, would be.
Okay, so I think we would go as long-term as possible to get the lowest possible monthly payment, and then, then we would basically talk about how we're going to split it up between ratepayers and, and general taxpayers.
And so the general taxpayers would just come out of the, out of the existing funds, or you would seek a debt exclusion at a later time, or? Or you would just do it under a special sewer and water debt exclusion?
I don't.
Any input from the?
I don't, I don't, personally, I don't foresee a debt exclusion for that purpose.
So we'd just pay it out of our?
It'd come out of debt service.
It'd come out of regular debt service, new, you know, just out of cash flow, new growth.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? All right.
Now, do you want the motion?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Select Board.
Come on up.
So what you say, general debt services, so increasing taxes to pay for that, or?
Nope.
That would fall under two and a half.
Just regular, just regular, regular, regular taxation.
So not anything new to cover, and then what about those of us who have our own wells, subject sewer, whatever, who, who aren't going to benefit from this project?
Well, you would benefit, because you, you live in the town, the town has businesses, the businesses use water, those businesses pick up a large proportion of, of the tax base. So we, we all do share in some, some form or fashion, we wouldn't, don't directly benefit, I see your point there, but.
Just another thought that I have on this topic, because I, I can see like the, I don't know, the yin and the yang on this, but the, the town as a whole supports the schools, the schools use the water, the town as a whole supports the town hall, which uses the water, the police and fire station use water, and we support them, and I think it's everyone's responsibility to make sure that they have, you know, good water. And the other thing I think is really important is that without additional water, we will have no new growth, and everyone benefits if we have new growth, so.
Right, that's, that's what's gotten us on this hole from a few years ago, was, been new growth.
So in the future, well, is there capital planning that goes into projects like this, or is this something that came out of the blue that needed to be done?
This has been going on since 17, so, and I can give you a timeline.
Yeah, new to the town.
Yeah, okay, we, we definitely need, the capacity issue is the driving force. We do not have sufficient capacity for new growth. We don't have sufficient capacity and we have restrictions. We're buying water from North Attleboro, we can't count on that forever. Consequently, we need to become water self-sufficient. In addition, our current water treatment plant was built in 1991, it will be 35 years old when we bring on the new water treatment plant. It's working beyond its capacity in terms of hours. We have no redundancy, so my concern would be if we have a catastrophic failure there, I got nothing. So consequently, the, this isn't all about PFAS, this is all about water.
Yeah.
And I, and I apologize, I do need your name and address for the record.
It's Michelle Wondello, 3 Brent Rock Lane.
Thank you.
And just the Cliff's Notes version of this, you know, it's, it's been a, it's been a project in the works, but as, is, everything has gotten more and more expensive.
Sure.
And also this concept of having to pull PFAS out of the water has gotten bolted onto the project. It's kind of taken on a life of its own and gone from, it's kind of doubled in size, and so it's, it's become quite a project.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would just also point out that there's a, a document on our website talking about the reason, the rationale behind cost sharing of water and sewer projects that expand our capacity, and that talks about, and the reason we kind of came up with that one-third is that 31% of our town revenue is coming from commercial business, so we're all benefiting, that's the benefit you see on your tax bill, so that was kind of where we started with that number, but anyway, feel free to look at that document or reach out to me, and I can send it to you directly.
Thank you. Come on up.
So Water Commissioners, are you right here?
Mm-hmm.
And who are the boots on the ground, was it Mr. O'Rourke, is he now the operational person for the Water Department?
He will be.
August 26th, yeah. Thankfully.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, just. So that money coming out of the general fund would be money that we normally could use someplace else? So will there be a vote on the 35-65 split for the taxpayers to approve it? Or is that just something that you'll make that decision on your own?
The vote would occur at town meeting and the approval of the budget.
So?
The board will decide the split, and it goes, the board decides the split, and then it goes to town meeting in the, in the budget, and the town meeting votes on the budget.
There'll be no one single line item to say?
That's correct, it will just show up as debt service. You can, if you want to, if you, if you hold the article, you can.
Yeah, it would just be rolled into just.
Debt service.
So you're not giving the taxpayers an opportunity to weigh in on this 35-65 split, where the money could be used someplace else? And let the, the users, the water users impact in the payments, because they're for their use.
So that decision would be made by their elected representatives.
Doesn't seem very right.
I guess, if I may, you can vote against Article 1.
Yeah, that's why we'd have to vote against Article 1.
Right, I mean.
For all the various reasons, you know, I guess, the other thing I neglected to ask is, what's different today than when in May, when we didn't have enough information to put it on the warrant? There's nothing really changed, I mean, we have a, we have an estimate now that seems to be built on the number instead of vice versa, and so what's different?
We didn't have the estimate.
We have more design information, they've, they've carried that forward, and we have a better number than we had then, more, more information about the whole process.
What specifically would be different, I guess, is what I'd ask. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Come on up. Oh, jeez.
Rick Chillett, 9 Bellard Drive, please clarify this issue.
I'm not final, but yes. We had a blueprint here.
If somebody's unhappy with that split, at the town meeting, they go up to the microphone and say, I'd like to make an amendment to change the one-third, third, two-third split to 100, 50, 50, what they want. And then what happens was that the registered voters, who have been verified as being, you know, registered and members of Plainville, will, will go ahead and listen and have a discussion, and then we'll vote on it, and then.
Correct.
Separate from the amendment, then we go back to voting on the thing, on the, on the actual, the bond, or the, or the.
Or the.
Or the, the thing. My point here is, you don't need two votes, you don't have, you don't need two articles to have two votes. All you've got to do is have somebody stand up to the microphone and propose an amendment to change that split. Is that right?
I would say it's not, you won't be proposing a change to the split per se, identifying the split by number, you know, 65, 75, 50, whatever. I think you would be proposing a change to the budget, so.
Dollar amount.
Dollar amount, $100,000 less here and more there, something like that, but in general, I would say you're, what you are suggesting is correct. That's, that's how you reflect the change.
So we're not, we're not painted in any corner here, we do, through the amendment option, have, have the ability, if, was it two-thirds decides, how many have to vote?
Majority.
Just majority?
Yes.
So you have the majority, you have a different split.
Yep, and you might change that year to year.
We may propose it differently, and that, the document that I, on the website talks about that, that you may look at changing conditions in town, maybe if we get more commercial, we'll want up that split.
And then instead of that, the only other caveat I would say is that, you know, you guys have done tremendous amount of due diligence on assessing the pros and the cons in this, and a lot of times it's like she screens the bloom, one place and that bulge is someplace else. So what you're doing is you have, making your split is a result of your due diligence, thinking what's best for the town, and the voters either agree with it or they don't. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I dig holes, 2 Whistery Drive. I just have a question about this extension of the water line to PAL. Is there a service line, or is there like a water main passing through the street there right now?
No.
So what's the length of this?
Actually, I don't think I, did you remeasure it yet, Stanley? I think it's about 5,000 feet.
5,000 feet, it's just going to be like a.
It's not 5,000 feet.
We had this debate, I said it was 5,000, Stanley said it wasn't, and then it was like 4283.
A mile.
I disagree, it's more, but nonetheless, it's going to come up Everett Skin.
So it's coming up, and it's just a one service to the PAL?
A two-inch line.
Two-inch line?
Yep.
Is there any concern about the water getting stagnant in there, the dissolved oxygen drop, or rising up?
Well, we have, we have DEP regulations about the flow of water, and we would have to bleed that line. I have a prior to it used in the season, and probably, and probably not during the season, but we would have to definitely bleed that line, because it's a dead-end line.
So there's plans to do that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good question, thank you.
Steven Albert, 1 Oak Ridge Drive. In previous discussions you've had about that line to the PAL, I know you've talked about the possibility of putting a hydrant at the end of Cowell Street. Where does that stand?
If we run the two-inch line, there's not enough capacity to run the hydrant. We'd have to run an eight-inch line, and that's where the cost difference is, and since at the moment, the only facility that would benefit from the hydrant would be the PAL field.
So the end of PAL won't go to the end of PAL?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, ready for a motion?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, you may.
I don't think we're ready to make a motion to approve.
Yeah, you're right, because we're going to be doing that at the next meeting after we talk more about.
All right, well, that's my, that's my opinion.
I'm fine with it, no problem.
So.
Once people know what we're.
Right.
Already know what we're talking about.
Right, it's like the concepts are all good, it's just, I wouldn't want to vote on it, the wording, because I don't feel.
Yeah, totally.
Well, we don't have wording on it.
I think the, the, I would wait until we have the wording certain.
Right.
So knowing exactly how much footage we're talking about is important.
Yep.
And then we don't have the correct wording for the KP article, so I'm, I'm fine holding off.
Okay.
Mr. Whitehead.
I'm sorry, who are you?
Mr. Kelly, in the interest of making all these articles, if we had a 30-70 split, what would the cost analysis be for the residents?
This is not on the agenda.
The water suppliers and the non-water suppliers and the taxes. If it came to a 50-50 split.
So we will bring that up at our next meeting, we talked about that at our last meeting, but we do have that chart, and I'll bring it up at the next one.
Okay, and then if it comes out to just be 100% on the taxpayers, what would be?
Yep.
So everybody prior to these meetings and having this all out front will help people make a decision that is based on what they want to do, because you don't want to get into an east versus a west.
Totally, yep, 100%, I'll put it on the next week. Yep.
So, so it already has been coming out in the presentations on the water treatment plan, it'll be out again next week when we do the next presentation for the public to answer questions. We're at least, we, we're at least going to have the one-third, two-third split, we've asked to have the 50-50 split ready by then as well, I don't, I haven't seen it yet, so.
It's in the table.
Oh, okay. Oh, that one. It's probably going to be like that, yeah, but that's, I, I want to see it in here.
Yep.
We're emailing it to you now.
And the schools were built by everybody, and the old water treatment were, was built by everybody, so you should almost have a 0-100 to the whole town.
I, I, you know, that's one opinion, yeah, Mr. Whitehead.
Okay, thank you. We do have to get through the rest of the agenda, but please come on up.
Just by the time the town meeting, yes, comes up, I just want to make sure we're going to be, at that time, presented with questions like, what of an impact it will be to a rate, to, to the taxpayer?
Yep.
What type of impact will it be to the ratep, to the water ratepayer?
Yep.
And what other options do you consider briefly, okay? So that type of information will be part of the presentation, right?
Yes, but I would remind everybody that we're doing a series of these presentations of that information, giving people lots of opportunity to ask questions. Here, we've got another one, August 20th, and one in early September as well. So, so it will be at the town meeting, but you got a lot of chance before the town meeting, too, and it's also available on the website.
I tried to see it on, on North TV afterwards, I just couldn't find it.
It's in your email. Thank you.
We should make sure we're having that in the announcements when those next meetings are.
Certainly.
Okay.
All right, we don't need a. So.
Vote for 4.3.
Well, we just talked about it, so you can, we can kill that off. Comcast, sure.
All right, 4.3, Comcast Propose Contract Town of Plainville Form 100 Filing.
So required by Massachusetts law is Comcast filing 100, which talks about the service to the town, the requirements for, for pricing, the requirements for service in certain areas of the town, how many companies they own, their financial beneficial interest, et cetera, et cetera. What this doesn't have is the contract with the town for our revenue split or our capital charges. That's to come, we're still negotiating, actually, we're no longer negotiating, we have concluded negotiations, we're now waiting for legal counsel to, from Comcast to approve, that I can then present it to the board for their review and approval. And in fact, I can give you the draft contract, I think I actually did email it to you, so that you could take a look at where we're at in the negotiations, but we're, we did good, because I'm not sure that I would have, if I were Comcast, I wouldn't be signing a 10-year deal, but they're signing a 10-year deal, and great, as far as I'm concerned, but at the rate that the court is being cut, I don't know if they're going to be here in 10 years, so we'll see.
I'm surprised not only at the length, but the amount of money for capital, doesn't sound like a ton, but the fact that they've put it out there.
They put it out there, and they're going to give us an HD channel, which is great.
Yep.
Rather than going into too much detail of the, the contract negotiations. I think it's a, you know, I think it's a damn good deal, considering the timing and, and where we are in the life of cable.
We're not going to vote on it now, are we?
No.
Well, you can if you want to. I mean, you don't need to sign, the, the Form 100 is just cross it a T, dot an I, the contract is what we really want, so.
All right, so you want to.
So you accept Form 100.
So we can accept Form 100, so.
All right, I move that the Select Board vote to accept the proposed Form 100.
Perfect.
Yep, second.
Like a lot of nothing.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meaningful.
Trouble going to sleep reading Form 100.
Very good. 4.4, ARPA Decline to Fund Library HVAC Replacement, we talked about that as we go through the warrant article discussing that. Is there anything more to be discussed there, Mr. Noble?
Other than being disgusted, no, it's fine.
Okay, so that was a quick one. Okay, on to new business, 6.1, sorry, we did that, 6.1, 6.2. Lead service line.
Lead.
Lead.
Lead, sorry, lead service line inventory and planning grant received.
So I really know that you like government mandates, so I bring this to you. The state is requiring us to do a lead service line, lead line into drinking water to homes in the town. We are required to do an inventory and identify who's got a lead service line, and to plan a replacement program to remove the lead pipes. We did get a grant for $350,000 to do this survey, the data entry, and then the plan of replacement. of replacement. Any money not used to create the plan can be used for the actual work. So consequently, this is a great... I mean, I hate having a mandate, but getting lead pipes out of the way is important and getting a grant for $350,000 is also important. And I would like to thank publicly Woodard and Curran, who helped us do the grant application. And I think it was because of their quality work that we got this much money. So we will be implementing this in the coming weeks. And this requires literally door-to-door work. So identifying... If we can't identify the line that feeds your home now, we actually have to go and do it, find it, and confirm that it's not lead.
Are you talking about lead pipe?
Lead pipe.
There's also lead in the spot that they use.
Yep, yep.
And to determine if it's lead or not, are they digging this up? Are they putting something down?
In some cases, they dig it up. Other cases, they just go to the interior line that comes into the house.
And they can tell from there?
Yeah.
Okay.
They can see where the line comes into the meter.
And they can see there. Okay. Okay. And I mean, how far does that $350,000 go?
I think we'll have money left over and hopefully we will because once we identify it, we got to change it.
Yeah.
So... And the question is, how many do we have?
Yep.
And that's the first question. The second question is, how much money to replace them?
Yeah. Okay.
We know we replaced some in earlier times with earlier work that we have done in the water system, but we've never done a comprehensive survey to be certain. And this is what the state's requiring and this is what the money's going to pay for.
Okay.
Part one of that, anyway.
Any other questions? All right. 6.3 Approve the Application for Change of Manager, Cumberland Farms of Massachusetts Inc., 139 South Street.
So this is a standard thing when they change a manager to change the liquor license. We have the approval from the ABCC. We have representatives from Cumberland Farms and for the records, would you state your name?
My name is Elizabeth Zano from Upden, Cornell, and Devlin on behalf of Cumberland Farms.
We've exchanged tag, telephone tag, but I apologize.
And with me is Robert Kiff. He's the proposed manager of record for the Cumberland Farms location here.
Great, welcome.
So gentlemen, because you're the local licensing authority, it comes back to you. All the paperwork is correct. The query check is correct. The police background check is correct. And the filing by Cumberland Farms is complete. So I recommend that the board approve the change of manager.
Have we had any issues with the current manager and the handling of the liquor license there?
Nothing. And the police chief has signed off on that.
That was my next question. Good.
Have you been working in this Cumberland Farms already or are you coming from... Okay. Very good.
He has plenty of experience managing Ruby Tuesday, so he has been handling alcohol just at a restaurant location rather than an off-premise, but he's at least familiar with the rules and regulation.
Right.
No questions, just I don't know if you understand how important Cumberland Farms is to Plainville.
Kind of the unofficial town hall of Plainville, so...
So you've got a big job.
That Cumberland Farms department was a couple of times at Texaco Station and my dad worked there.
Oh, is that right? Okay. That's great. That's great.
Pretty sure that's Dale's garage now.
Right.
That's right.
That's awesome. All right. Where am I? I move that the select board vote to approve the application for change of manager, Cumberland Farms of Massachusetts Inc., 139 South Street, and forward the approval to the ABCC.
I second that.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Sign. Sign this right now and they can take it right over.
They can take the permit with you. Don't go away. I can't hear. Well, I'm not giving them the form.
They just walked out on you.
Oh, well. We'll mail it to them.
Okay.
It'll be fine.
Next up is approval of a Hawker peddler license for Junior B. Bellnow Sun Run... What is it?
Bellnow.
Bellnow. Sun Run Solar Panels. Anyone here? Want to come up? No?
Nope. Okay. So we have a completed application. And actually, I want to compliment Junior for actually filling out the application correctly and properly. We have some vendors that don't think they need to and they do. Right now, this will be the only active Hawkers and Peddlers license in the community for Sun Run. Anybody else? Call the cops.
So Sun Run is the only one?
Only one.
Okay.
My recollection is this is a renewal.
This is, well...
Already been...
They've done it once before.
And I... So I want to confirm that and I wanted to check that what our issue... If we'd had any complaints or issues in the earlier part of this?
We have not.
Because I have not heard of any problems.
Correct.
But, okay.
And this license is only till September 12th.
Right. Right. The short duration.
Correct. We only give them out usually for 30 days. And they will also have a town-issued ID that's a vendor permit that they're supposed to display as they walk between houses.
Yeah. I think he worked in like April before.
Correct.
So your application is filled out?
Yeah, for some reason. They didn't copy well. I'm not quite sure why. Here, let me pass you something.
You got a blank one with a scribble on it.
It doesn't...
We don't care.
As long as you have it.
Yeah. For some reason, it didn't print. I apologize. Thank you.
All right. So Sun Run's the only one.
It's the only one.
They love my house. I move that the select board vote to approve the Hawker peddler license application from Junior P. Bellnow Solar Panels, effective August 12th, 2024, expiring September 12th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 6.5 An Amendment to the FY '24 Budget for the KP Regional School District.
Presented to you is an amendment to the budget, which is the way the Commonwealth requires it to be done. They overspent their budget for mostly special education. So consequently, they're taking some money out of E and D and some other budget adjustments, which are presented to you. Normally, as you know, a KP budget would go through town meeting. But when they run a deficit like this under Mass. General Law, they can go back to each Board of Selectmen to vote the change to their budget. Two of the three towns need to vote. The other two have already voted.
Mr. Chairman, if I could...
Please.
Just to be clear, this is one of the ways they use their E and D fund during the year. And we talked about E and D earlier in terms of potential capital stabilization fund. This would be money that would no longer be available for capital stabilization in some future thing. But not that that affects this vote, but it's something to think about when we look at the language that comes across, I think, on capital stabilization account. Secondly, the good news is this, because they are using E and D, there's no change to the assessment here for Plainville, so it doesn't affect our budget at all or any of the other three towns. So I think, and the fact that everybody's... The other two towns have already voted, it's kind of pro forma.
Right. Okay.
I move that the select board...
Certainly can. $40,000... Excuse me. That isn't correct.
No.
That's the total budget.
The deficit was 667,420.
No, that...
No? Again, I apologize. All right. The current deficit of the FY 2024 operating budget is 667,420. Based on actual and encumbered expenditures, based on the previously approved total budget of $40,875, including debt service, we recommend that the FY 2024 operating budget be amended to $40,676,195, including debt service, with no changes in assessments to any members.
$647,000.
667,420.
Is it pulled from E and D into the budget? Yep. 67,000.
667. Yes.
It's like a 1.67%. That's what they told us.
That's what they told us.
That's what the budget shows us.
We refer you to the school, the KP Regional School District for further clarification if you have other questions.
Well, I'll do this. I'm... I'll make a motion to adopt an amended FY 2024 total budget, including debt service, of $40,676,195, with no change in member town assessments. That was...
That wasn't the one.
That's what was here, so I'm assuming that's what the other towns voted.
Yes.
I'll second.
Good second.
That's what I wanted to confirm.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Maggie.
It's the right thing to do.
Yep. All right. 6.6 Appointment of a Special Police Officer.
We request from the police chief to appoint a special police officer, Officer Alfred Morell, effective August 12th today, expiring on June 30th, 2025.
I move that the select board vote to appoint Alfred Morell as a special police officer, effective August 12th, 2024, expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Is there a favor?
Aye.
There's Kevin Baldwin's appointment as well. Oh, good. And because we did so much...
I think we're done.
We are done.
Boom.
Entertaining motion to adjourn at 7:51.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Plainville. Have a good night.